For attending, it is now three o'clock.
Hopefully four.
You know what, I came here an hour early, my apologies. Why don't we begin by saying a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for bringing us all here in good health and in good spirits. I ask that you change our attitudes into a loving attitude for each other and that we work together for the good of our district and the good of each other. In your Son's name we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Black Flag, our pledge to lead these to be Texas.
All right, we only have a few agenda items today. Do we have any members of the public? No comments, okay. We go right into the regular agenda, good morning.
Happy morning to you also.
Item number four, consider an act on approval of the district's fiscal year 2022-2023 audit report. We have Jennifer.
My name is Jennifer Winnicky, I am with NACSE. You all have a copy of the audit report for this fiscal year ending on nine thirty. I know John came and presented last week or last two, last week. So I, do you want me to go through the report? I'm happy to do it, or do you want to just ask questions?
George and I were asked to take a look at it and give our feedback to Eric, and we did, didn't we George? Well, you did it for us.
I said, the feedback I've gotten is nothing from anybody except just now Tom circled an R on page forty-three. And so I guess with that, I think it's ready to approve. Are you ready to approve it?
Okay, so we arrived early. And so, you know, we had a brief discussion last time, which we discussed before we arrived, about the built-up equity in the DWA. And I guess we would like to kind of repeat that discussion to everyone.
Oh yeah, so we were kind of talking the historical, that the equity is divided based on your portion of contributed revenue and expenses, you know, which business forty-six contributed to WWA. And so equity is added to that, but then there's a little bit of a disconnect that you guys have pointed out in past is that distributions are made based on, I actually thought it was single-family equivalent unions. Maureen corrected me, it's based on the admin fee, the ten percent. Right, so it's, it's, you're earning equity on a different basis than you're being distributed excess equity, which doesn't happen very often. I think it's been.
Actual projected connections is what the admin fee is based on.
Okay, all right, so I was indirectly correct. And so they're not necessarily aligned, and that may be something that the WWA looks at. One of you is a representative on the WWA, they can look at making that more equitable and evenly, so you're not at a point down the road where somebody is in negative equity. And I think that's what, where the conversation came up with, because some of the districts are getting down there, and you're, you may be one of them. But you know, that's something that the WWA should look at.
So is, there's a document that detailed this. And could we get that document distributed?
I have it pulled up right now.
Okay.
So it'd be coming out, it's something I think we need to read, and then, I don't, I don't, I don't.
I don't see.
I misunderstood, I thought there was a payout. Let the trustee be, I thought we were discussing a payout. No, so, so what we were discussing is topic, and so there's been no recent payout. But I think it's maybe time that we read it and see if we all agree with it, or whether we want to discuss it.
Right now, we're working on, is the audit report correct as it sits here now?
Um, I.
Yeah, I think we're ready to approve it, we just want more information on our contributions versus.
What's that?
I don't have a problem with.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we.
Yeah, we just, we just wanted a clarification.
Struggling to find it.
We just wanted a clarification on the payout.
And, you know, equities in the document.
Correct, you want me to show you where it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so if you want to go ahead and turn to page ten, that's your, your, basically your income statement. It's something different for governments, but you know, I'll kind of give you a little brief. On the left-hand side is kind of where you live and breathe operationally, that is your fund level modified cash accrual. Then there's an adjustment column, and in the far right is your full accrual. And that is where you will see your investment in joint venture. That's actually on the fund level also, I just realized that. So if you go, this is your balance sheet, go to the next page, your investment in. Sorry, you were in the back page. Your investment in joint venture.
What's it do, a document, maybe it's, maybe it's a WDA, I mean a trustee document, you say at everybody's position.
Um, that should probably, if you go, who has it? Did you have?
Yeah, I think it's the trustee.
Yeah.
Okay, nobody bought it.
Yeah.
It should be, so that number, so that your number one thirty-seven should be right there. There, now that, that is the net income for the WWA.
And so the net change, we contributed eighty-nine of net change.
This past year, correct.
What would drive that change? You know, if I, I mean, I understand.
Yeah, that's going to be, it's a net number, it's going to be a net number of your revenue and expenses of the business you flow through the WWA. So it excludes all your district own expenses, it's just all your expenses and revenues that have flowed through the WWA.
So when you say some people getting low, what would be considered low? At the end, participation or?
Well, I mean, thirty-nine.
Would be low.
Yeah. I mean, it's still positive equity, it's still in the best way. And really, we're, we're not really talking about something you're going to sell, I mean, it's kind of of a intangible.
So we did, we looked at.
Okay, well, we'll look at this, but it's. Let's go ahead and make a motion to approve this budget.
That budget.
Audit, mistake. All right, and I'll second it. All those a favor?
I.
All of those opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Thank you for putting up our questions. All right, item five, discuss the SJRA wastewater strategic plan. Hello, Dan.
Is that? This item was put on the agenda at your request because you were running out of time at the last meeting and thought you might want to talk about it, so.
Okay.
There's some presentation that I'm aware of.
We don't have any handouts, no presentation. We have David Vaughn here with Priest and Nichols, I think most of you are familiar with him, the consultant that's been helping us through the wastewater strategic planning, myself and Chris are here, so we're happy to work through any questions you may have or specific things you'd like to talk.
Um, I would, actually, item six. It has us discussing alternatives to the SJRA Woodlands Division proposed infrastructure projects. And I don't recall us discussing what, if we're discussing alternatives, what are the primaries?
What is funding alternatives? We talked about it at your last meeting.
Okay.
So that's the next thing on the agenda.
I remember.
Right. Funding alternatives. So we talked, we talked about a couple of the different alternatives at your last meeting, and.
I think we just skipped over it at the last meet because we ran out of time.
Maybe, yeah, it was, I think it was fairly early in the agenda, but.
Yeah, we got.
But we can certainly, that's the next item on the.
Right, right. So, okay, I'll tell you what, we'll just skip item five.
Well, no, 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 that's the important.
So, okay. Collection, the reason we put five before six is because there were a number of issues raised by David related to the work that had been done to date by the River Authority regarding the need to replace the wastewater treatment plant, and felt like that discussion should come before the discussion of funding alternatives.
Okay.
Through that, about the replacement, you had the, you had the committees that went through and the working group and what have you, but I think that discussion about wastewater treatment plant needs to occur before we talk about.
Alternative.
That will be the phase two.
Yeah.
Okay, because I approve you that I've got the book on.
Okay, so at the last meeting, you came up with a bunch of bullet statements that you wanted answered.
My, 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 I go back to, you know, I would say with the documentation provided in the technical assessment for wastewater free plant one, you know, in a, in a regular corporation, it's insufficient to justify three hundred million dollars in expenditures. And I don't think that a, you know, it's done in that way, if you look at that document, the most common word is it's in good condition. The next common word is, you know, there's, there's no need for rehabilitation. It doesn't really state that there's a problem. If you go beyond that, you know, the other document that you guys have provided is this book right here.
Well, there's.
Let me go on, I mean, I'll finish, you can, okay, because I'm about done.
Okay.
So I made copies of, of this, and I'll pass the rest of them down here, so if you take this book here, and there are three pages in it that apply to wastewater treatment plant one, three pages, and and the first one is the lift station. So if you, if you look just quickly, lift station, the clarifier, and the limited channel rehabilitation. So this is, this is everything that the River Authority identified as deficient, it's in this document, right? And the total cost of those, those rehabilitations, right, is six point seven million dollars. You know, so for the next, this goes, this goes to twenty thirty-two. Twenty thirty-three, and so we have a technical assessment that doesn't talk, the only number in the technical assessment is forty-six thousand dollars for the capital. And then we have these three, which add six point nine million to that, so all of a sudden we have three hundred million. And I'm just saying, from my experience in corporate America, you know, to get three hundred million dollars, you need to have some numbers. Not just statements, like verbal statements, you have to have numbers. We don't have those numbers yet, in my opinion, the SJRA needs to go back and start getting the numbers, and come back to the body and present a numbers-driven justification for this expenditure. That's what would happen in any corporation, any corporation. It's not, it's not happening here. And I, I think that has to happen, you know, I'll be honest with you, I have this document that you sent me, or Charlie sent me. I have the other documents, and you know, it's, it's ethical assessment states, I mean, six, six licensed engineers might put their stamp on there, attesting to the factual statement of the technical assessment. And it doesn't justify these expenditures. And that's, you know, that's, you can take a look at these, there's six million bucks that we wrote, I guess the three most serious issues. And I'll be honest with you, I have a background in pumps and valves and actuators and mixers, that's what I did for half my life. And, you know, I walked around that plant, and I looked at them, and I said, well, they're typical pumps and valves and actuators. And you know, they have a life, it's not fifty, but years, but maybe it's ten years, depends how much you rotate them, for most of them, how much friction is created? And you know, when it wears out, you either get it rebuilt or buy new. In this, in this thing with the clarifiers, you know, that money is being spent for mechanical devices. You know, that's, that's, that's the gearbox and the motor that rotates that, that device. So I, I just don't, you know, I, it's, it's likely want to be placed the whole factory because we have blemishes on the concrete. You mean, that's globally what's being said. But pumps and valves and all, I'll be honest with you, it seems like your mechanical, electrical, electronic equipment is probably in pretty good shape. I didn't see anything that really worried me, and then I, you know, I went to a few buildings, and I saw, you know, typically, you know, if you live up in New England, you have a basement, you know, you have that water seepage through those cracks and you, you're covered, some sort of sealer. I just don't see it, you know, if we need to build like this lift station, we went in that lift station, there's two of us, and, and for three point nine million dollars, we can build a new lift station, and you know, when we have lift station one or two, and then, and then, you know, get rid of it, the second is it won't be needed anymore. So I'm adding these numbers up, and I don't get any closer to three hundred million, but the numbers you have provided thus far, thus far. You know, I, you know. We need, I think we need more data, because the citizens of the Woodlands are going to ask these hard questions when this gets out, and it's not there. You can go back, it's like a corporation would do that, send you back.
Yeah, let me.
And get the data.
Because you're just repeating yourself.
Yeah, I'm done.
Did you guys get the bullet statements that he requested at the last meeting? He was, he, he gave very specific requests for different numbers. I have it from the last meeting.
Oh, that's the one I handed out for, memorandum, yeah.
Right, and I consider that kind of homework for you guys? And I guess that's why we included a discussion about the SJRA, if they could come back and answer any of these questions on these bullet statements. So.
I passed it out as a, what did I call it, the top of it, that I don't have it with.
You, you, you wanted, yeah, you made a motion.
A motion, yeah, a motion to request the data.
Yeah, and that's, we just asked for the data, and, okay.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it's in the minutes or anything, whether that motion was.
Was the minutes from last meeting.
It was the minutes, or it's, this motion was passed out by Dave at the January meeting.
But it, it wasn't in the, the February meeting, because February meeting is happening next week.
Right, right.
So do you maybe want to take a copy of that for everybody here, including our guests?
Sure. Let me do that.
Dave, not to be argumentative. I, I accept what you're saying here, because I have no knowledge or experience to the opposite, insofar as numbers are concerned, to say that I need more numbers. What specifically are you requesting from the SJRA? This is complicated. Um, to provide you, that's not on that list, that we'll have shortly. I think that was a, just, I mean, just a number. Thing that I, I think you'd normally expect to see in, in a business board. Well, I don't have it, I'll be honest with you. Oh, we'll have it in a few minutes.
Yeah, we'll have it in a few minutes. Well, I think the bottom line is, they're not prepared to answer the questions, because they.
But they may have questions about the list. Which, and you want to clarify what they delivered, I don't want to waste their time.
We'll just bring it up at the next meeting in what, a week? Yeah. So, it's no skin off my back if we just postpone it for a week. So, why don't we do that and just move on to the next agenda?
Are there any questions from, from the group here as to what's specifically David is looking for, asking for?
Not so much of a question, but the numbers he's referring to were not updated because they were going to be scrapped in place of the wastewater strategic plan. Okay, so there's also additional projects that were removed because going forward with the strategic plan.
Elimination.
Elimination.
Right, I knew that.
Such as it did those there. So is the intent and the request from the board to update all those cost estimates for all the projects that were removed at wastewater plant one? Because that does.
Can say is, you know, we've been on the board for two years, so this is the twenty-three thirty-two copy, and there was a twenty-four thirty, I have two, two years worth. You know, it's in the.
Can I make a suggestion?
And they're, they're identical.
Good, thank you. The SJRA, the consultant Freeze and Nichols generated the report. And it has lists that you're talking about in the report, and what I'm wondering is, does this report answer your questions, or exactly what is it that's missing that you want to see?
So I have to have it.
Okay, good.
So I, I guess my observation, you were flipping to a table there.
Well, it lists, here's the, the pieces that.
Right, what it does is it lists remaining useful life.
Right.
So, you know, again, I, I, I look at that, and it's, if you read the technical assessment, it states we made useful life, but the problem you have is, when you talk about mechanical equipment, electrical, you mean, and you know, you usually want to know when it went to service, because remaining useful life could be, it went into service like here. Right, and you have it for ten years, so I, I find that interesting, you mean, but I, you know, when did it go into service? I read the document, then I take the tour, and I look around, and you know, that was probably more questions than I had when I went. We spent, we spent one and a half hours, it's been a lot of time, but, you know, normally, you know, if you would present this to the board of directors, right, you'd have a business case. And.
So you said that a couple times, but let me back up to before y'all were on the board. That information was presented, at that time, the cost estimate for the peak flow projects, repairing the project plan, everything goes about a hundred million dollars, including the owner control, eighty to a hundred million dollars, roundabout rough numbers. At that time, the cost to replace the plant was about a hundred twenty-five, a hundred fifty million. So we presented all that information, so all that information is available. But looking at this list and updating those numbers that I just said, that will take time and money. And I cannot expend time and money without the approval of the trustees on this side. So I can hear your request, and I can read your request, I can answer something right now. But I cannot go further with this until the trustees authorize it.
So, so let me just say this, okay, so, um, you know, what happened with previous boards, we don't sit here anymore, that's interesting. That's interesting, but you're coming to us today, asking for an expenditure, and you said, well, back there, we discussed it, what, that, what matters is what we're presenting today, not what happened five years ago. I mean, you know, you're, you're coming and you're presenting a request for capital of three hundred million dollars, which is a big number in any corporation. And I've taken this stuff that you have presented me, now, technical assessment, and this book, and I don't see it. And it could be that it exists, but you know, that's, that's a different era. Today, this is the elected board, and this is the board has to vote on it, and I can't vote on something that you said happened in the past, I want to see it today.
Understand and agree, what I'm saying is to get those numbers for today, for this board.
Yeah.
I need authorization from trustees to spend the funds.
You know, I, I'll say this, I'll just say this as a comment, I go to a lot of the, the board meetings. Their board meetings, SJRA, the GRP meetings, I go to the meetings, and I hate to say it, when SJRA doesn't want to do anything, they say you got to pay us to do it. I understand that, that thought, but you know, in a way, you should have had it done already. And you don't. So, you know, I think, I think we need to hear from the new general manager. Get him involved with this discussion, and maybe the chairman of the board, of the SJRA board, because they're missing from this discussion. And, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I understand, things cost money, but I've watched the SJRA with their board and with the GRP board, and that's a favorite statement, when they want to do something, is well, you got to pay us to do it. Well, okay, I understand that from, you know, from a business standpoint, but, you know.
Okay, I think.
You got two million dollars and you didn't do it. I mean, you bid for it and you approved two, so something got left on the, on the floor, right, you cut something out of proposal. Maybe you cut the justification out, maybe because the boards in the months typically don't pay attention to this, they're rubber stamps, they come in here, oh, their head goes up. We're not rubber stamps anymore. We're going to look after the citizens of the Woodlands. And you need to justify this expenditure, in my opinion, and I'm just one vote, but, you know, it's not justified.
Chris is correct that we would need to go to the trustees, we could, because they have the authority on the budget. You know. That's something that we can have the trustee representative bring up, of where what forty-six is on the, the project of the wastewater treatment plant, and, and what y'all need to talk as, as a board about what do you, and each of you as board members need in order to be comfortable to move forward with engineering design?
Yeah. It, it appears as though we're at an impasse here, is it possible for those numbers or the answers to some of his questions, they're buried somewhere? Somebody within the SJRA knows where to find those numbers.
She's going to be.
That way we don't have to spend money.
So, to Chris's point, this, when it came up about, you know, rough numbers, about replacement versus rehab, you know, this was a few years back, and what is going to be current enough to, number one, what do each of y'all need to be comfortable with the project, do you need a cost comparison side by side or not? Number two, to the extent that you do, how current do those numbers need to be, or, or each of the directors, you know, Davis, you know, certainly made clear his position of needing current numbers, which will require not just what's in the file.
What about the numbers from the past?
Well, that's for each of y'all to decide, if you need a side-by-side comparison, what are you comfortable, are you comfortable with the numbers that were presented before, but that are maybe a few years old? Or, you know, today's position, they need to be current as of now, which is going to require additional expenditures, that's, that's for each board member.
How old are the numbers now? How old are the numbers now?
Twenty twenty, maybe twenty twenty-one, right before the big inflation hit, which is the biggest concern we have.
Okay.
If I'm, just, since I'm kind of new, am I understanding that those, the numbers that you're asking for were provided at one point, you weren't on to the board, stakeholders made the decision to go forward based on those numbers, and one of the, so the comparative number of, of band-aiding stuff, it's kind of sits there, while the other number continued to go up, which is the replacement cost, so this one was never continually updated because the decision, based on those numbers at that time, was to move forward in the manner that they have, is that correct? Now, is that correct?
When, when did you join the stakeholder?
Actually, a couple, a couple of years, right? So. I'm just saying, is that, is my understanding correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I think it's a question.
I, I guess. Really a question for everybody involved.
I guess the question is, the stakeholder board was formed possibly what month, year?
What was that? Yeah, like November twenty twenty-one.
So basically, and we got elected June of, we were elected in May of twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty-two, that was two years. You know, it.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
So, it's no problem, it's, it's all easy. Y'all have gone through and tabulated up a cost to remediate, one, one of the options was repair and replace wastewater plant one and two, and y'all have tabulated all that cost, whatever it totals up to, two hundred and forty million dollars. And I'm thinking, that answers your question, is that tabulation, what does it take to get it up to speed, and they've also got a timetable for doing those things. And I think that's answering your question, if you could just see that tabulation.
I, you know, it's, it's really, it's up to you guys to present the case. And, you know, I, I've, I've listened and I've taken the documents, you know, I asked you in a Freedom of Mission request, Freedom of Mission Act request, to provide me the documents that justify the statement that this plant is at the life, and I got them all in this book. And I got them all in this book. I got them all. And the discussion we have today were not included in that free location request. Did not include that. We had an opportunity, but you didn't. So, you know, I, I think you guys need to figure out, you know, the business case to justify three hundred million dollars. In, in, in my observation and, you know, if it happened in twenty twenty-one, I mean, you know, uh, they're, they're not the ones voting. I, I mean, pretty much three of us have been here for a little less than two years and.
You, you're asking some good questions.
Yeah.
And.
It's a big.
One, I've gone back and, and was reading my, my notes and the documents that I've got. And frequently it's, it's stated that the, the plan is, is at, I don't think the words are end of life. But it's, it, it's getting old. I, I can't remember the exact words y'all used, but. When I go look at the, the data, I, I don't see, you know, line by line which unit is about ready to fail. There's several units that are going to fail within ten years. And I think that's a statement y'all use frequently is within the next ten years, these units need to be replaced. And you're talking about a six-year project. So, you know, that, you don't want to wait till it fails to do it, but you want to get it replaced before. So a six-year project meets that need, I think. But what's not clear is what are the pieces that are going to fail? And what does it cost to replace them line by line? I think you've got that, Dave.
Okay, I'm gonna interject here. I think we're at an impasse. Let's let the trustees uh, talk about this, whether they want to spend the money and get the new data. Um, that's not a decision for us to make, correct? All right.
Answer your question. Normally, when you have impasses like this in the corporate world that Dave was referring to, and you put a stake in the ground, and if the stake in the ground is twenty twenty-one, which is when the last report and the compilation was put together, was that a line item detail of what needed to be done? Stake that twenty twenty-one or was it an overall statement?
That's when we started.
I'm sorry?
That's when we started.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and re- report was issued in twenty twenty-three.
Right, and we've, we've seen that.
Right, but to begin the entire study and see if it's feasible, it was a rough order of magnitude for the plant itself. And then it was either a project or group of projects. So it may say wastewater projects from the project plan, which David presented. Peak flow projects, air, uh, aeration basins and uh odor control. So it was a group of projects that were identified and then.
Well, inflation is going to hit whatever we take a look at from twenty twenty-one on. So if we put a stake in the ground from the last time we have credible and, and agreed upon information, you don't have to do a lot of work. You've already got that, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah.
But, okay, so if you've got that, and let's say inflation make up a number thirty-two percent. Fine, but that's an off-book kind of comparison. You can analyze what the project was supposed to do is a full rebuild or partial rebuild based on the areas that you've identified. And we, if we decide to go a particular way, add thirty-three percent to thirty-two percent to it. And we've got a ballpark on where we are today without spending a lot of money and it'll be faster. And at least we can, it's kind of granted, it's going over the issue thirty thousand feet, your word Mach five. But we'll be able to get a, a feel for where we are, get our arms around it. If there's more areas that Dave has identified that we have to drill down to, we could certainly come back and hover over that and say, does this make sense? And what would that cost to update? Because that's significant to the go-no-go decision. Does that make any sense?
It does.
But, and I think, you know, David, I'd like for him to speak on this, but you know, he can speak more on how we, the, the number of alternatives that we looked at in that phase one analysis and how cost estimates were pulled together in that time. But, you know, I will say, you know, there is more projects than these three. And you know, a big one that's missing is the aeration basins that should have been, I think, in that. Uh, you know, the other thing to keep in mind is yes, that is a ten-year project plan, but when we approached this overall strategic planning back in twenty twenty, you know, this was a long-term planning horizon. During the phase one, we looked at a fifty-year planning horizon.
Correct.
So, you know, keep in mind, we were looking long-term, what is the best valued option and alternative? Go forward then for the woods. David, I'd like for you to kind of add on.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Um, so it, it, it feels like there's still a little bit of confusion as to just how much work has been done. And David, maybe if, if you requested it and we haven't given it to you, maybe that's on, on me and, and I'm okay with that because I, I can rectify it. Uh, it, it does still feel like um, the board is not aware of the, the breadth of work that's been done. So let me kind of just take a couple of minutes to just kind of walk through everything that's out there. So this topic dates back as far as twenty fourteen. Okay, twenty fourteen, I think, is the first report that I'm aware of that that really starts delving into the um topics that are pertinent today. So the first uh, treatment plant one evaluation report uh twenty fourteen starts laying out many of the issues that we reviewed and then incorporated as part of the condition assessment into the estimate of remaining useful life. That, that was really the main point of the condition assessment. It's, it's not to lay out what the alternatives were. It's not to price out what the rehab should be. It's to identify what the remaining useful life is so that we can take that as then the second report and lay out alternatives that one meet the level of service criteria. And number two, replace things on or before they, they fail. So let, let me back up a little bit more again. Going back to twenty fourteen, I think there's been three different engineers out there, four counting us, that have looked at the issue of the biological treatment. All four of us came to the conclusion, there is not sufficient uh aeration basin or clarifier capacity out there right now. Based on paper, when we as engineers, process engineers, we run it through our computer models. It's showing that if you get a max month load similar to what's happened historically, plants could be busting permanent pregnant. The reason it's not is because people like Rick Moore that are out there working their magic, keeping it compliant. So based on, on numbers, based on the um criteria that the state gives, it, it should not be able to meet permit. And that's an issue that need, one way or the other, whether, whether it's a new plant or just new aeration basins, a, a resolution of that needs to be implemented im- immediately. That's one basin. The um digesters uh also have issues requiring contact basin is not up to code. The lift station uh interior has corroded severely. You know, we all looked at that when we were out there. Uh, there's a lot that's, that's going wrong. Uh, or let me rephrase that. There's a lot that's concerning. And that has been documented in a number of reports. If, if it's helpful, I, I can kind of summarize those key points that we've plucked from different reports. Um, uh, that's up to, to Chris and, and Dan. Um, so th- there is a lot of documentation out there as far as the issues that need to get resolved. The alternative analysis takes the data, the expectation of remaining useful life and lays out, uh, goes through a number of alternatives. One of the alternatives was a repair as you go type of alternative. Yes, let's build those aeration basins again now. Um, and then when the clarifiers fail, we'll rebuild them. When the filters fail, we'll rebuild them and, and kind of piecemeal it. Um, that in comparison to, let's just rip the Band-Aid off and build a whole new plant. We did uh not only uh financial evaluations from, you know, our side, but we also worked with the S J R A to run rate models to see how it would impact the average citizen's monthly bill. So a- all that's available, um, if it has been made available to you, we, we, we can make it available. But there was a business case where we looked at not only cost factors, but non-cost factors as well with representatives from all the muds. And at the end of the day, those representatives felt like the recommended solution is the way to go. So, oh, there's a lot more information out there that, that you haven't referenced yet. Um, I can run through these questions now and give you a informal answer and then we can respond with a more formal answer.
Tell you what, you, you said all that information is available and that has been stated in other reports. Can you just make those reports available to Mr. Smith here?
Talked a little bit about this last time. I, I think that they're on the uh, the Google Drive. And I think maybe the bridge that have, the gap that has to be bridged is, I mean, it's hard to find them on there.
Okay.
And if, if it's helpful to everybody, we, we can probably make them more.
I think that's, that's a bridge to the gap that we're facing right now.
David's going to be our lightning rod for this project, for this look at the project. Um, who would he be working with directly and when can that be set up? I'm not trying to make your schedule for you today, but you know, you've got very, very important questions that need to be answered and decisions made and issues resolved. Um, who, who would that be is the key person for him to talk to and set up up meetings and report back to this group and to the trustees? Who would that person be? Any S J R A or with the engineering company or consultants?
Eric, would you want to run that through you and then coordinate with us on?
I would be as well, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that would be, would have been my recommendation, but I, I, I want you guys to tell me what needs to be done or us, what needs to be done.
Thank you. The point of context, Eric, and then depending on the questions and the data, it's Chris, it's myself, it's David, it's our senior man.
All right. So let's make it hap- can you make it happen? You've got the, the questions he has and let's just answer those questions individually. So it sounds to me like the answers are out there. You, you just haven't seen them.
The two documents I have that I got were uh, the Woodlands wastewater C T plant dated March the third, twenty twenty-three. And then the Wood- Woodlands uh wastewater C T plant technical memorandum, condition assessment dated December sixteen, twenty twenty-two. They're the ones that were provided. So, I'm saying, other than.
As I said in the last meeting, there's thoughtful information that we would want to use. Sure, you, you know how to find it on the Google Drive.
I think a big one, which George is well aware of, is we posted all the meeting minutes and all the slides from all the stakeholder groups, which um stakeholder meetings, which includes number of charts, numbers of figures, laying out all the alternatives and, you know, the slide there, not every single one of those made it into the actual report.
So, you know, I just say, I mean, I'm, I'm asking these questions because I, I wasn't here.
Well, I think part of the problem is the.
We had a big class of new elected officials two years ago, big class, the biggest ever, I think. So there's a lot of people who have not been exposed to this. And uh, like I said, I personally don't think there's any rush. You know? We, we need to, we need to have a, you know, closure that this information brings to current members. We're going to have to vote on this whenever they vote up to, up to uh the, the, the knowledge position they need to make a competent vote.
I would slightly disagree. There's no rush, but there should be a sense of urgency to get this done. There should be a deadline on getting what you need to be able to feel comfortable with not only giving it to mud forty-six, but also to the trustees. What kind of timeframe are you looking at that you think would be appropriate?
I, I, I reviewed the documents I've gotten and the information I've gotten. You know, and I would say I find them wanting. You mean, and I, I'm, I'm here to, if there's more information, you know, I'm willing to.
Okay, but that doesn't, that doesn't answer the question. What's the timeline that you're?
I, 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 my timeline is dependent upon their delivery. I've already set a timeline. You know, I, I requested the documents.
Okay, how about ASAP?
Well, you know.
We set up a meeting and, and I'll join you too. So I've got my calendar for at least the next eight months. So. What would be good time for you to get together with Dave and I'll try and work my schedule into that?
Of course, I think we need to locate the documents that.
Finally do that.
You know, it'd be better, yeah. You, if, if you give me the documents to read, to sit there and hand me the documents, say, let's talk about them, you know, it's not going to be effective.
Let's get that to you. We'll, we'll search the Google Drive, find those documents that have been identified. Give you some time to go through them. And make sure that we want, might want to make sure that we found the ones that you're talking about. And make sure he's got everything that we think we have. Give you some time to go over it and then we'll come back, circle back and, and schedule a meeting where we all can sit down um and talk about.
Can we designate a uh date for finding the missing documents? Week from today, week from the end of the month, what, what would be good?
It, it, it'd be even a matter of days, but we.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
So if we.
How about by the end of next week? Can we just?
Sure, twenty-third.
At the latest.
Twenty-third.
To get the documents.
To, to get all the right, to extract.
All the missing documents.
On Google to get it to you.
Friday the twenty-third.
Please send me the, the title.
We'll try.
It's a lot of stuff in the Google Drive.
Eric, if it's okay, we'll make a, just talking Brian, I made a suggestion. We'll make a separate uh OneDrive. And we'll drop it all on there and then y'all just send that on.
Yeah, that's the thing is, I can, I can fumble through all the data just as well as, as he can. I, I might want to know what I'm looking.
Has it, they already prepackaged it and then Dave, you just go forward the email to David, you click on the link.
All right. Have we kicked the, the horse, the dead horse until it's uh?
It's limping.
Yeah. The, the dead horse is limping. All right, let's go on. Item number six. Discuss potential funding alternatives, right, related to this very proposed infrastructure project. Okay, I understand this correctly. Are we discussing the alternatives, either the S J R A funds it through a rate increase or we fund it through uh, bonds?
Uh, more or less. There's more nuances than that, but.
All right.
What we're going to report next week, as uh, we've been working behind the scenes, Adam and Brian and I, as well as some others, to um, number one, identify, again, putting all aside, any debate about if and when these things need to occur, just assuming that, that when they occur, we need to figure out how we're going to fund them. Right? So uh, we've, we've kind of got to get past number five before you can get to the rest of it.
Okay.
But assuming that, um, how would we do that? And so we talked a little bit last month about uh, right now, the way that the agreements are in place is that it would uh, go into a wholesale water rate that would go via pass through to the customer in your water serve bills.
From the S J R A.
And when I'm talking about that, I'm talking about um, not just this project, but I think what was in there was six hundred thirty-two million, I think about five hundred and change is the treatment plant and A C. Um, and that was about five hundred and change and that would be what would be needed for um, for new money. Uh, and the other hundred and fifty million or so was in earmarked for R and R and uh, previous bond, bond funds that were already in place.
Say that again, just when you, when the numbers began, could you repeat?
I'm sorry?
The number, you, you mentioned sixty, one fifty, what was the rest of it?
No, no, no. In, in the ten-year plan there, I think the, yeah, the ten-year plan, the overall amount is six hundred thirty-two million, as I recall. Um, and if you look at the breakout of the A C and water lines and the waste treatment plan number one, that number, those two projects come to, but design, engineering, construction, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, comes to about five hundred and twenty-five million, something like that, five hundred and twenty million, something like that between the two projects. Um, that leaves about a hundred and twenty-two, hundred and twenty-five million. And when you look at those projects, uh, those, uh, again, this is over the next decade or so. Uh, those additional projects making up the sum uh, would be funded in R and R and previous bond funds that were already funded in twenty seventeen. So you're really looking at just about five hundred million for the two. I think the water lines split up in eleven or twelve projects and then the waste treatment plan is, we just talked about. Um, so that's just the assumption is there's projects we have to do in the future. How we, how would we fund it? Again, getting away from the, the debate of when and why. Um, and so that would be one, water sewer rates as a pass through, through the wholesale rate structure that you already have in place. Another one that we discussed briefly, that's probably prohibitive, would be to go out to the voters for bond authorization. And that would entail, in the end, doing debt service, creating debt on your own for, to do your own bond applications. That's just problematic and not efficient and very costly, just due to all the issuance costs, if anything else. Another alternative was to look at doing a rollback tax election. So that, like option two, would also be kind of on the tax side. But in that case, you would go to the voters to approve the idea to, instead of have it on your water and sewer bill, to have it on your tax bill, and you would modify your M and O tax rate, not your debt service tax rate. So you wouldn't be selling your own bonds, but you would be raising M and O tax revenues through your M and O tax.
And the S J R A would have the bonds.
And then S J R A would sell the bonds and then you would fund them through M and O tax revenues. That's right. And then there's maybe another quasi option here and there is to do just flat fees on your water bill. Again, that kind of goes back to your water bill. I think you might be able to capture enough money, but that would be something we need to develop. So each of those different options is what we behind the scenes right now committed to at the last board meetings to come to you in the March meetings and try to have those performers prepared for you, for all the muds to take a look at. And we're shooting for the March meeting. So this month, basically, my update is going to be, we're working on it and we'll have the numbers for you in the March meetings. That's what you're going to hear at your regular meeting next week.
So in the March, we'll have written document.
Our expectation is that we will have performers for you to see. Our intention, my intention is for you to see what those would look like, what the tax bill would look like, what the average water bill would look like, so that you can make some decisions as directors to say, okay, if we do go forward with these projects and win, how do we want to fund them? Do we want, and we don't have the numbers yet, but you know, if you're looking at a water bill, I don't know if I want my customers to have that level of water bill, or I'd rather it be on the, whatever, whatever the decision is made. And then there may be a decision where we need to go back to the voters for clarification of what they prefer, depending on what the numbers are. So that's what we're working on right now. And I think we believe that we can get some, get the evaluation done for your March meetings. That's our goal.
Okay, thank you. So I'm almost right.
You got it.
All right, any other discussion on item six? Close enough for government work? All right, item seven, discuss the mud forty-six twenty twenty-four goals. How do we want to open this discussion up?
Think this was a topic that you had asked for, I believe, just to talk about.
Well, let me, let me start off and stick my neck out first. My number one goal is to get out of debt. I want mud forty-six to be out of debt. And the reason for that is I'd like to start discussing consolidating the muds. That's been a goal that I've stated since I got on this board, so. It would be kind of hard to get out of debt if we took on more bonds. More debt like that.
And I did a rough calculation for what it would, you know, we took our share of this wastewater plant cost. It looked like to me, our debt share would be fifty million dollars.
That's quite impressive.
That's a big chunk.
It is, it is. I'd rather that debt be passed through.
Yeah.
As opposed to selling bonds on our part. Like you said, that would be ugly.
It's a big chunk.
Yeah, I think that ends up being option last.
Yeah, I understand. And that's why I did it, was to just see.
Wouldn't be something that I don't think any of us are gonna stand up and go, I think you should do that. I don't think, I don't think any of us think that.
Well, does anyone else have any other goals that they'd like to?
That's a massive goal, it's.
Yeah. Obviously, when you set goals, you have to set objectives too. Short-term objectives, long-term goal?
I'd like to explore other revenue opportunities for the W W A outside of conventional. And I think the first or second month I was here, I wrote a note to Jayce Houston and Jim Stinson about some offline, out-of-the-box thinking idea that would generate revenue. And I would like to discuss that offline with Eric to see if he has any observations on how absolutely crazy these ideas are or how viable they can be, what needs to be accomplished to even pursue it. It was dismissed out of hand as being unrealistic, and it may very well have been. I had all of two, two months' experience, maybe six weeks before I wrote the document and I sent it to both parties. So rather than go wait to have a discussion now, which wastes time, I'd rather set up a time to talk to you either here or someplace or a lecture, whatever, and just kind of go through it.
Happy to.
Go ahead.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, let's, item eight, discuss matters for placement on future agenda. Okay, they've left, but could you, I'd like to see an update on the pending litigation involving the S J R A. We haven't heard anything in the last four or five months. Any objections to that? I don't think the last time we were all invited to that.
Time to get ready to go to that, I've got it like.
Yeah.
It's two hours you need to be.
He sent us an invitation and I don't think any of us, yeah, I don't think any of us left, but.
I went.
I went.
He went, but he got to sit in the hallway. I got to sit inside. I wish I understand, but the whole three weeks, but I.
Yeah, both are complete, both are done, and the judgments are pending on both.
Okay.
That's a short story.
Yeah, we could ask them to do a summary on the various, because as you know, there's multiple pieces of litigation. So let's get a status report on where they are.
The trial in Austin was at a bench trial, too.
I don't, I couldn't tell, off the top of my head.
I don't need, that's something I don't call here.
I have a question for you, Brian. A conversation had with Ed right after Jayce left and Chapford concerning money that was recaptured by the S J R A. I'm picking a number out of the air, it was twenty-something million, if I'm not mistaken.
I can't read it now.
It was a chunk of money. And what I asked for was the disposition of that funds going back to individual muds or to the W W A for appropriate distribution. Let's make up numbers, call it twenty million for the sake of argument. That could take care of a good portion of phase two implementation over the course of the first two years. And since nobody was appointed between then and now, my question is, where's that money? How's it being utilized? Who's watching that chill of money? And when do we get our claws into it?
I've asked the exact same question about, and I think what you're referring to is with quad vest.
Yes, that's correct. Quad vest at all.
To allow for an appeal procedure to move forward more quickly is my general recommendation. So I've asked the same question of, you know, what is, what is the plan for, because it goes to the GRP division? And so the question is, what is the plan for how those funds are going to be, going to be handled? I know that GRP have been really short on reserves and what have you, so I understand that they may need to replenish some reserves or what have you, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen.
But that's not our problem. We have been funding for X number of years since the litigation started, so.
Don't disagree at all.
Okay.
My question is for them, and I'll relay it from you as well, is what is the plan for those funds? Is there going to be some mechanism to release some of those funds from the GRP division to participants, including the Woodlands division as a participant? And if so, a lot of ifs in this, but if there is, you know, a chunk coming back to the Woodlands division, could some of those funds be used toward these projects that would lower?
Well, it could be just a two thing. It could be given to each mud based on their, the amount that they were supplying to fund this litigation, which in turn, in the case of forty-six, will make him smile because it would help build up our reserves for the X number of months of operating expenses, which is something you've been talking, the money's there. We just need to bring it back into our control, and it's been months now.
And also, we're talking about the money that, litigation.
Yes.
We also had two droughts.
Yes, and we're now getting, making money.
Well, so those are the two, those are the two pots. One, additional revenue that came in to the Woodlands division because of increased usage as a result of the droughts. And the other piece is, are the funds that the GRP division is holding. What is the plan to, for using and either using some of those in the GRP division, returning those back to GRP participants? Once we know that, then we could go to the next level of conversation. If they're in the Woodlands division, to what extent would they be used for long-term hauls or refunded back to individual participants? That's the next layer question, once we figure out.
Hierarchy of, of claim. That amount of money, who gets first dibs on that?
Well, we go to the GRP division because they're the participant.
And then you gotta realize that the whole county, anybody paying the GRP fee would be a participant in the refund.
Well, anyone who's part of the eighty-four.
Eighty-some odd customers of the S J R A, right.
Yeah, so it would be that the Woodlands division funds as a participant, but of course, we're all members, and then that's going to go into the next year's budget process that is going to go through the river, I'm sorry, go through the trustees about, okay, Woodlands division now has X amount of funds. Here's what we, the River Authority, are proposing to do with it. We'd like, you know, Woodlands water trustee approval, whatever that plan is, so.
They're essentially dimensionalized how much money it would be to each mud at this point.
No idea, because I don't even know what the total pot is. And I don't know what the percentage of the pot that goes back to Woodlands division versus others, so that's.
I would think it'd be utilization as a percent of the aggregate. No?
Speculate till the cows come home. All right, anything else? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. All those in favor? Okay, approved.